Good evening, the Charter Township of Plymouth Board of Trustees. Special study session for Tuesday, February 5th, 2019 will come to order. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Heitman?
Here.
Trustee Dempsey is excused. Clerk Corva, here. Trustee Dorchevitz?
Here.
Trustee Kermy?
Here.
Treasurer Clinton?
Here.
Supervisor Heitman?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, I need a motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
Mr. Supervisor, I move we approve the agenda as written.
Motion made by Trustee Heitman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Corva, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next up is item C1, new business. This is a board discussion on the text amendments to Chapter 99 of the zoning code, Article 22. Just want to give a quick update on sort of the game plan for tonight. This is a study session of the Board of Trustees, so this is something that we have requested to take a deeper dive into this particular issue. We are not making any decisions tonight. We do not make decisions at study sessions, one way or the other, so there'll be no votes taken or anything like that. We just want to spend a little bit more time on this particular issue, and it would have been far too prohibitive to have done it at our last regular board meeting. So our purpose tonight is to listen and learn, and to hear from our consultant, our attorney, and then also from the public. Before we open it up for public comment, if the -- there's basically the two HOAs that are here tonight. So there's the Fox Point folks and the Plymouth Commons folks. So, you know, if you want to during the discussion, try to designate maybe a couple people from your subdivision. I'd be happy to entertain more than a three minutes' worth of questions. So I'm not stopping anybody from speaking, but if we can designate a couple individuals who could come forward tonight and ask questions, I think that would help expedite things rather than repetitively, you know, having a bunch of folks come up for, you know, three minutes apiece. But that's your call, I'm just giving you that as an option. So, here's our plan for tonight. We want to listen first to our consultant, Laura Hawe, she's our planning consultant, she works for McKenna Associates, and she's been our planner for just about the last two years. Then we will hear from our attorney, Kevin Bennett, and then we'll open it up for public comment. And again, we're going to try to adhere to the three-minute rule, but if you're some kind of designated person from your HOA, then we'll try to be flexible on the three-minute rule so that we can consolidate time and consolidate the issues. All right, so, I'm going to hand it over to Laura Hawe, who has a presentation for us.
Thank you Supervisor Heitman and trustees. I'm going to start by giving a brief background and some illustrative examples on cluster housing. Cluster housing is an optional development method that is considered an overlay to an underlying zoning district. On the screen is a site plan image of a typical subdivision that I'm sure many of us are familiar with. You can see that the parcel is completely occupied by private lots, there's no common open space except for roadways. Even the top lot up here is a private residence. You can see now with a cluster housing development how on the same parcel, due to the concentration of lots and pockets around the site, the quality of the overall parcel is preserved. You'll notice that there's walking trails called out, the natural topography was made intact in areas, and existing vegetation was preserved. There's additionally less infrastructure, roadways, that were needed as part of the cluster housing. In this scenario, there were additional wooded areas that connect to a nature preserve that made the cluster housing development exceptionally advantageous to employ. And in discussing cluster housing options, one of the questions that comes up is really what are the advantages, specifically what are the advantages to the larger community? And so I just want to briefly touch on three key benefits. The first, and the most obvious, is open space. So contiguous open spaces are good practice both for conservation and for wildlife habitat purposes. In a traditional subdivision, as you see on the screen, there are still open space areas, but these are privatized. And in practice, when the subdivision is created and to actually construct these homes, many of the natural features are demolished. There is a wealth of literature that demonstrates connected open spaces provide a greater habitat, but also environmental benefits, as groundwater recharge is more effective and it acts as a natural stormwater management system in addition to any planned stormwater infrastructure. The second key benefit is the economy of construction, infrastructure, and maintenance. So by grouping homes together in a cluster housing development, it reduces unnecessary infrastructure, such as roads, streets, utility lines, which has a secondary reaction which reduces the overall impervious surface which is tied to the environment, as well as the future of private and public sectors' maintenance and replacement costs. And then third is the social aspect. You know, there's been numerous studies that document that the clustering of homes has an advantage for those living in that neighborhood to feel more connected to their neighbors. Certainly, not everyone wants to live in a cluster housing development, and that is perfectly fine, but it's well-established that providing a range of housing options is a quality of life measure that most municipalities strive for. And then also tied to the social aspect is the possibility for more innovative residential design that can make a community or neighborhood more unique. A second illustrative example here on the screen is this parcel that exists along a water body. In this scenario, there's only six lots that have private access to the best feature, which is the lakefront. And utilizing a cluster housing option, you can see that the waterfront area is not no longer privatized and is available to all residents in the neighborhood to enjoy.
How many units, back up? How many units on the left and how many units on the right?
I think there's approximately the same, it looks like there's...
So it's the same?
In this, yeah, illustrative example. Smaller lots and different layout. It's important to note that cluster housing developments come in all shapes and orientations, that not one is the same. And this is largely due to the fact that one of the main criteria for a cluster housing is to preserve the quality of resources that are on the site. So in this case, the image on the screen, it was likely determined during the planning review process that the highest quality open space was in fact this area to the west, where there's trees preserved and park area, and not in the middle of the site where the houses were then concentrated. So in this case, you have homes concentrated further in the center area with one larger space on the west, and sidewalk connections throughout. Another example, this cluster housing development illustrates more of a traditional grid pattern, and in this case, it has a more centralized open space for the enjoyment of the neighborhood with pockets of green space scattered throughout. So as you can see, there's a wealth of different patterns and layouts that cluster housing options can take. It's all very unique to the subject site in order to truly preserve those resources or the wetlands on site. I'm now going to cover the most significant proposed amendments to Article 22 in chronological order for ease of following, but I'm happy to discuss any of the proposed text amendments. The first section under consideration is 22.1 Eligibility Principles. To start, APA, the American Planning Association, has acknowledged that since there is no standard form of a cluster housing subdivision, cluster housing options have to be determined on a case-by-case basis, and due to this fact, there's a certain level of discretionary consideration and review by the municipality that's required. This is why the proposed additions to Section 22.1 Eligibility Principles are so important so that the township can properly evaluate the merits of each project on a case-by-case basis. Currently, our zoning ordinance only has five eligibility principles, and with these proposed text amendments, we've expanded that from five to nine. The first addition speaks to the users of the community and the township, and is shown on the screen.
Laura, when you say "users of the..."
Just a second, Jamie.
We're talking end-users, the ultimate owners of the cluster houses?
Future residents.
As opposed to a developer or...
Oh, correct, future residents and...
What's going on? That's okay.
Hold on, hold on.
Yeah.
Bob is on, Bob is on. Hey, Bob!
Audience.
What's wrong? Bob's phone has been through our... Doesn't that movie...
Yeah.
Yeah. That movie wasn't...
Jesse Heitman, you're correct. This provision speaks to the future residents of the development, but also the township as a whole. It's getting at the character and the overall benefit to the development, what does that bring to the community? And this is an extremely common provision that we see in almost all cluster housing options, or ordinances, excuse me, across the nation. Secondly, there is language added to include pedestrian connections and circulations because we acknowledge that these are important considerations, just as important as vehicular circulation, and this provision is attempting to apply a complete streets approach, which is a national best planning practice. Third, there is a provision added on cohesive community, which emphasizes the common open space and recommends a range of housing styles. This is an attempt to not wind up with a cookie-cutter development, but a unique residential development that really advances the character of the community.
Can I interrupt you there, Laura?
Certainly.
Could you go back to that one? Just the, it just struck me as interesting, the words when you talk about, "We're going to create these open spaces for passive or active recreation and for resident interaction." Then there's words later, "The neighborhood shall be designed to create clusters of housing synergy and promote interaction." Why is, why is that important verbiage to have in this ordinance?
That's a good question. The language is, earlier on, when I mentioned that one of the advantages and kind of the overarching themes for cluster housing is the social component. This language, dealing with the synergy and promoting interaction, that helps to achieve that goal. And then in terms of the passive or active recreation, it's important to include both those, it's important to include that language because it's nice to have a open scenic view shed, but it's also important to have walking paths where appropriate and to have those neighborhood connections so that residents of the neighborhood, you know, can walk their dog and enjoy nature. The fourth provision is that the protection of environmentally sensitive areas, this would include landmark trees, wetlands, scenic view sheds. This is a new provision. And then lastly, there is a provision that would consider historic structures or architecture if applicable to the site. Moving to Section 22...
Can you back up this sentence, please? A lot of it is... One more sentence, it's missing. Mine says, "In the case of a proposed CHO to the sub, which is lacking said natural areas, this requirement..."
This requirement can be satisfied by the creation of natural areas and amenities. Is that in or out?
That's incorrect. That just refers to if maybe there's not landmark trees at the site, but they would like to do a, you know, dense woodland planting in one of the park areas that they designated that would qualify, or be encouraged, I should say.
Along those same lines, I noticed in the previous one, we talk about height and quantity and sufficient size. Nowhere do we mention quality. And in this one as well, "I'm building a natural area, I'd like it to be quality, I don't want to put 50 trees up just because the township told me to put up 50 trees. I want to make sure we do a nice job and everything's quality." Does that make sense?
Thank you, that's a wonderful point.
Is that comparable to what we're doing now with, what do you call it? We have the situation with the development on Plymouth Road. You have a term for it?
The payment and lieu?
Yeah. I mean, is that a comparable sort of thing where you would have to create or redesign some kind of a recreational or green space enhancement on the property or adjacent to it, or both?
Yes, it could work either on the site, or if there wasn't room on the site, they could do payment and lieu for an off-site impact, and it would be based on the natural features that they were impacting.
But it's relevant to that site, it's not, it's not like I can build a pocket park on the other side of town or something. It still has to be relevant...
Correct.
...to that site. Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, moving to Section 22.3, this is application information. The text amendments in this section increase the amount of information that potential developers would need to submit to the township for review in order to have a complete application. So, the proposed changes include a narrative of the benefit to both the users of the neighborhood and the township overall, and it also requires additional details on their concept plan that aren't called for today, such as any pedestrian paths, open space amenities, and additional features, because right now, that isn't part of the application requirements.
Again, I want to make sure that we understand that they're the end-users as opposed to a developer or somebody else that may benefit from whatever we're trying to do.
I will make note of that. And then I just wanted to point out that Sections 22.4 through 22.8, as related to the planning process, that there are no changes or decreases to the level of public input or meetings as part of this text amendment consideration. This process is proposed to stay the same, and it includes at the very minimum, five public meetings and one public hearing. And you can see here on the screen that at the onset, there's a public hearing with the Planning Commission for the concept, the option review, which then goes to a public meeting of the Board of Trustees. And following approval of the option, the applicant would work through the site plan development review with the Planning Commission at least twice, and then following a Board of Trustees. And just please keep in mind that this is the bare minimum, and in other cluster housing developments, we've seen applicants exceed that.
Back up, back up. Where are we in the process on Regency at Ridge Meadow, which is the piece of property owned by North Ridge and planned to be developed by SACWA? Where are we on that?
We would be at this first spot here and staying here. The Planning Commission held a public hearing solely for the purposes of discussion, and the, there was no request for consideration of the proposal for approval.
So there will be another public hearing if that process, if that development goes forward? A formal public hearing?
A formal public hearing is not required under state statute, which...
I'm talking about our Plymouth Township ordinance. Will there be another one for that development, or has it been met by that requirement?
There was a public hearing already for this development. At the January Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission expressed interest in, should this application proceed, that they would like to have a second public hearing in good faith.
And I will add that the application has been withdrawn as of tonight.
All right, Section 22.9 refers to the contract requirements. So as part of the cluster housing process, there's a contract that the applicant enters into with the township. And there are several amendments that are proposed which place the responsibility of the property owner to dedicate open space and for that open space to be protected by maintenance agreements. Again, this is common language in other community ordinances. The next section, 22.10, General Conditions, there are a number of beneficial amendments that act as standards for future developments. They include provisions for requiring parks, natural areas, and amenities such as walking This section also provides stronger guidelines for evaluating the type and quality of open space, recognizing that open space is unique to each site, and in fact, the American Planning Association does not provide much greater guidance than this on layout or orientation because they recognize that every site is different, and that it's a case-by-case basis. The section also has provisions to protect adjacent homeowners from having adjacent uses that maybe, and commonly are, in other communities constructed as a part of a cluster housing development. So for instance, one trend that we are seeing in other communities in Metro Detroit is that some of these open space projects are tailored towards active senior adults, and that they prefer to install pickleball courts as part of the development. It's not something that we have seen historically in Plymouth Township, but it's something that we're seeing trending. And one of the concerns that we often hear from adjacent residences is that they want to put the pickleball courts and the other recreation amenities too close to the houses. So this provision is a safeguard in that such amenities could not be located near the boundaries of the development as to negatively impact the residents of adjacent land uses. So that's just some background on why that was provided. There are also several different architectural standards that were added to the general condition section, the first being an increase in the minimum masonry exterior requirement. Currently, it's 40%, and this was increased to 60%. And there was also a statement incorporated regarding to variations in color kept to a minimum in harmony with the surrounding area. And there are also a provision to include variety in the design of individual units, again, trying to avoid a cookie-cutter subdivision, and for 50% of residential units to have non-front-facing garages. This is a fairly standard provision now in other surrounding communities, and it helps add visual interest to the neighborhood and streetscape. In terms of density...
Laura, can we, can we go back? It looks like we missed some. I'm on page, I'm on page eight.
Did you say eight, eight at the top or down at the bottom?
Eight of thirteen.
Eight of thirteen?
Eight of thirteen, correct.
This section reads, "A minimum setback of 25 feet shall be provided on drives whose primary purpose is to serve as access for only a few units." And then the requested language is, "A minimum setback of 25 feet may be permitted, provided the project offers exemplary design and neighborhood best practice such as additional recreational amenities, pedestrian connections, and streetscape enhancements with additional landscaping and street lighting." The reason that this section was not included in the presentation is that the Planning Commission already has the discretion to permit the 25-foot setback, this is just adding on some additional safeguards, because as of now, there's only one criteria for them to meet, whereas, as proposed, the development would have to provide more than just a short driveway, basically, in order to achieve that setback variance.
So right now, if I'm understanding it correctly, right now, the requirement is a 42-foot setback, and under a small number of, there could be a small number of units that would get 25 feet. It says to serve as access for only a few units. So the majority would be 42.
Where did you get that small number?
Well, it's, read it right there in paragraph seven.
Seven.
It says, "A minimum setback of 25 feet shall be provided on driveways whose primary purpose is to serve as access for only a few units." So it seems like...
I thought that was struck.
Well, it's struck because it got replaced with the red.
"May be permitted," you continue the sentence.
I was more concerned with "may be permitted, provided the project offers exemplary design." I have a problem, who decides what exemplary design?
Well, that's really my, I think that's my concern as well there, it's, the rule is 42 feet.
Right.
But it's very subjective then, if it becomes 25 feet.
Right.
How do you, how do you make a determination whether it's exemplary or not, and it comes down to a subjective decision by the Planning Commission? I'm not a big favor of subjective criteria like that.
I agree.
Okay.
Trustees, if I may just clarify, so the requested, the 42-foot requirement is from the street to the front of the house, just this area in here. That is what may be considered for the reduced setback. From the perimeter area, which is the rear yard here, this is a requirement of 50, and there's no change proposed to that section. Currently, right now, the Planning Commission has, and the Board of Trustees, has discretionary allowances to reduce that 42-foot setback to 25 feet. And the criteria in here would add additional provisions, additional hoops in a sense, that the developer would have to meet in order to request that modification.
Give us a little perspective. 25 feet, I think of Cherry Hill Village in Canton, Michigan. Is that right?
They might even have 20-foot setbacks.
Less, yeah.
It's 20? We know that? Okay, so it's a, 25 feet, it gives you the air of Cherry Hill Village.
In Northville Township, I believe theirs is 20, or 25, excuse me.
Northville Township.
Correct, for the front yard setback. I think that there's maybe a provision that if you go to 20 feet, there's no sidewalk. But I'm happy to take a look, a deeper look at this.
Yeah, I think you understand the concern is that it turns it into a subjective criteria as opposed to a rule.
But, a lot of what the Planning Commission does is subjective. That's why they, people submit site plans, and ultimately, it has to come to us, so we're going to also engage in a certain amount of subjectivity as well when we look at final plans.
The other one I wanted to discuss, Laura, is up above that. It says the maximum number of units which may be attached, and you're changing it from four to six? That's in paragraph 6A?
Yes.
How do you attach six units?
It would be a townhome-style development, similar to what's on Ann Arbor Road by Red Olive.
Okay. So then if I go, if I go back to paragraph four, on page seven, it talks about how dwellings may be attached. It says you can have a common wall with the garage, you can have a common wall with a... I don't see how you can adhere to paragraph four with six units together, you know what I'm saying? I mean, right now, paragraph four says you can only attach two garages together, or you can attach, you know, you can attach one common wall together. I don't see how you can adhere to that rule if you've got six condos lined up together.
I see. We'll have to take a closer look at that. I see. We'll have to take a closer look at that. I'm wondering if you could line it up for four. Maybe there's a, you know, a way architecturally. But thank you.
Okay.
Why was that provision changed? Four to six?
Right now, we're seeing that most townhomes, townhome developments are at least six unit, if not eight or 10. And this was a minor increase that would make them more applicable. Moving to section 2211, permitted densities. Right now, there is no bonus provision in the cluster housing ordinance. Under section 2211-1, the proposed text amendment would give latitude to the township for granting additional density up to 25 percent provided that the provision here as highlighted in blue would be in harmony with the existing and proposed land patterns of adjacent properties and the general planning area. And then in aiding the planning commission and the board of trustees in making such a determination on a density bonus, the existing density chart, which is shown on the screen, has not proposed to be changed at all. So these are the zoning, residential zoning districts that correspond to the maximum number of dwelling units per acre and there was no change proposed to this. So this is the planning commission's and the township's board baseline. This corresponds to the zoning district and it would be taken into consideration along with the remainder of the zoning district, the schedule of regulations, the master plan, and the future land use map of the master plan. So a density bonus is not considered in a vacuum. It's considered along with this baseline assessment, which is not proposed to change, the master plan, the other ordinances of our zoning ordinance, and the future land use map.
Can you help me understand that sentence that says that is accessible to the public? So you could, you would give a density exception of up to 25 percent for open space, recreation, or other purposes that it is accessible to the public?
So historically, in the township and looking at the other cluster housing developments that were approved and the RUDs, the residential unit developments that were approved, there have been open space, but it's made, it's still private enjoyment to the homeowners association. And the American Planning Association recommends as a best practice that that land that's to be preserved would actually be conveyed as a public easement for the enjoyment of the larger community. So this would be such a provision.
So a park in your backyard? Public park in your backyard, that's what you're saying?
Well, it would have to be so designed so that it could accommodate outside individuals coming, but this isn't designed to insinuate that there would be, you know, a splash pad in a neighborhood. It would be appropriate.
Nope, sorry, I got another one. "The following gross densities may be permitted subject to modification."
Yes, if we're to allow the gross density of up to 25 percent provision above in this section, then we would need a modifier to the chart.
It seems to me that that modifier would have to be a little more specific, referencing back to the 25 percent. Otherwise, you could say it's subject to modification. I could just turn around and change it to anything I wanted to. Seems a little too broad.
And also, public review is assumed as part of that, subject to modification, correct?
Of course. And then there is an additional provision for exemplary projects for the planning commission and the board of trustees to consider a density bonus greater than 25 percent.
So I'm sorry, what, this property again is, what's it currently zoned? The subject property?
Do you mean the Ridge Meadows? That property, I believe, was the R1E.
It's E, okay. So I thought that's how you get to the 18, okay.
This provision here on the screen is for exemplary projects with a density bonus greater than 25 percent that may be considered. This is provided that all of the requirements of the clustering, cluster housing option ordinance would be exceeded. So for instance, as we discussed earlier, that there's the 50-foot requirement setback from all perimeter property lines. Maybe in this case, for consideration of a density bonus, the applicant might provide double the setback. They might provide 100-foot setback or they might provide triple the setback, 150. That's something that we see very common. Or they may provide 40 percent of open space on the site. And again, those would be the discretionary provisions of the planning commission and the board of trustees.
But again, we're talking exemplary as very subjective, what the definition of exemplary is.
And then to aid the planning commission and the board of trustees immediately following that section, there is a new provision about a density impact statement. And this allows for the township to request such a statement that documents any environmental, traffic, socioeconomic impacts that may result from the proposed development. So this might include a market study. This may include an environmental report with mitigation steps. It may include a traffic impact study with traffic calming provisions that would have to be implemented. And it may result in a decision to reduce the density that's requested on the site. But right now, the planning commission doesn't have this tool in their wheelhouse to request such studies and postpone the process until those documents are received. So this would help the township paint a, or understand the true value of a proposed project and its implications.
Would public review be considered an input into quality of the surrounding community?
Yes, in any planning process and application, the planning commission is very diligent about making sure that comments are received, whether they're written or in person, and responding to those.
Well, yeah, we just have to make sure that the public is well aware of that they have that opportunity.
Those are the major changes to the Cluster Housing Option Ordinance, Article 22. Thank you for your time this evening. If you have questions, happy to answer them and also know that if there's suggestions or modifications that we are completely happy and open to accommodating those and taking direction.
Okay, any other questions for Laura from the board?
Mr. Supervisor, just a note that even though Trustee Dempsey is not here, he did submit a memorandum on these issues and it will be made part of the public record.
Okay, let's move on to Kevin Bennett. I don't know, Kevin, if you've got any additional comments. I understand, you know, we are in receipt of the petition document from the last meeting. That was referenced at the last meeting, but it was, has been received by the clerk's office. I don't know if you want to comment on that or if you have anything else you want to add tonight.
Yeah, what I did want to comment on was the process involved in amending the zoning ordinance. The first step to determine what is the appropriate process is to determine the character or the nature of the amendment. There's two different types of amendments to a zoning ordinance. There are text amendments and there are changes to the zoning map or rezoning. Text amendments involve changing the language of the ordinance itself. Examples of that would include adding or deleting uses permitted within a particular zoning district, changing general restrictions applicable within a zoning district, and making procedural changes. Rezoning involves amending the zoning map to change the zoning district classification for a particular property. Both the Zoning Enabling Act and the zoning ordinance, Zoning Enabling Act is state law, the zoning ordinance is the township ordinance, both of those distinguish between text amendments and map amendments. The process involved with respect to notice for each particular type of amendment is different. With respect to text amendments, what is required is simply notice by publication within 15 days of the public hearing that the planning commission would hold. Both require, both amendments require a public hearing. However, the notice requirements for each are different. For a text amendment only, the notice that's required under section 103 of the Zoning Enabling Act is that the township conduct a public hearing, publish notice of the hearing in a newspaper of general circulation within the township, not less than 15 days before the hearing. That is the notice that's required for a text amendment to the zoning ordinance.
Stop right there. So there's no mail notice required?
Correct.
Yeah, we know that that law has got to be changed because people don't read newspapers. They're not in circulation, so that's not effective.
Okay, changing of the law would be a discretionary consideration for the legislature and the township board. The laws that exist now only requires notice by publication for text amendments.
So that would require, can we be more restrictive or more expansive than what the state law allows?
Yes, the township has the option of granting an addition, the board has the option of granting an additional public hearing if it wants to, but that is discretionary, it is not mandatory.
I'm talking about the notice requirements. Can we be more restrict, more restrict? In other words, mail it for a text amendment? Or are we somehow giving up our legal rights?
Who would we mail it to?
The 300-feet rule.
I think...
In addition to, I'm just, we don't need to change, engineer this today, but we need to think about that because it is not effective using the newspaper.
May I just suggest what a possible rationale for the distinguishing characteristic of notice is between the two? If there's a text amendment to the zoning ordinance itself, a text amendment, that's going to apply to the entire township or to whatever districts apply in that particular one. If there's a change to a zoning map, you're dealing with a specific parcel of property and that parcel of property is going to affect the people who are within 300 feet of the boundaries of that parcel. So there's a conceivable difference between the reasons for the 300-foot delivery notice requirement for rezonings and not having that requirement for text amendments. So again, both the Zoning Enabling Act and the zoning ordinance provide that for text amendments, the only notice required is the 15-days publication and a newspaper of general circulation within the township. There should also be postings also, under Open Meetings Act. With respect to rezonings, there is not only the notice by publication requirement, there is notice by specific delivery. Any person, the occupant of any structure within 300 feet of the boundary of a district proposed to be rezoned must receive specific notice by mail.
And what is the definition of mail? It's postmark date, date that you put it in the mailbox? How do we administer that, Laura, today? When you put out the notice, 15 days, when's your clock start? Is it postmark? Is it, I don't know.
Plus, if we don't know who lives there, it goes to occupant.
If you read it the way it is, you don't know when the 15-day starts. Is it the day you mail it, the day they receive it, the day it's postmarked?
The Zoning Enabling Act says is the notice by delivery is considered to be given when personally delivered or when deposited during normal business hours for delivery with the United States Postal Service or other public or private delivery service. And the notice shall not be given less than 15 days before the date the request will be considered. The name of the occupant is not known, the term occupant can be used.
So you can, you drop it, as long as you drop it in the mailbox, the 15-day starts?
Trustees, I will say that we monitor those dates very carefully and provided that we have the application, we get that out of the door as soon as possible. We don't wait till that date to put it in the mail.
So from a functional standpoint, let's say we implemented this text amendment and things are going normal and somebody, a developer comes in with a cluster housing option. Do the adjoining territory properties get a notice? It's not a rezoning.
Okay, so the difference between a rezoning and a text amendment is rezoning requires the specific delivery notice as well as publication notice within 15 days of the public hearing. And again, the Township Zoning Ordinance tracks the Zoning Enabling Act on these notice issues. Under the Township Zoning Ordinance, three entities have the right to petition the planning commission for an amendment to the zoning ordinance. That would be the planning commission itself, the township board, or a property owner in the township. The process or the notice requirements are the same no matter who initiates the application. The last thing that I want to talk about is something that Trustee Kermy has already brought up. Under the Cluster Housing Ordinance, it does contain both notice by publication and notice by delivery requirements?
That's 22.4.
Yes, that's exactly right. So the planning commission would have to hold a public hearing on the issue of whether or not to recommend to the board to grant the cluster housing option. If a petition is sent for a cluster housing option before the planning commission could hold their public hearing, they would have to comply with both the notice requirements, publication and delivery.
I still got a problem. I come in with a cluster housing option and our rules say it's, you know, this small, but it could affect others down the road. Like this particular one that we're discussing. You know, I'm half a mile from there and didn't hear a thing about this and none of my neighbors did. And they would certainly have a lot of input because of traffic concerns we have today. What can we do? How can we do anything to make that known or make that expanded?
With respect to the Zoning Enabling Act, the township board's not going to have any power unless you want to petition the legislature to make changes to provide greater notice than 300 feet. The township board would have the option, and this would be a discretionary consideration for the board, of increasing the 300 feet in the ordinance.
For cluster housing options?
Yeah, or for rezonings or for anything. We're just, what the township cannot do is be less restrictive than the Zoning Enabling Act.
We couldn't make it 100 feet.
Right, you can't do that.
Okay, Kevin, anything else? Okay. Okay. All right.
Sorry, Laura, can I go back? I was looking at my notes and I missed one question. Under the, it's on page 6 of 13, right near the bottom, contract requirements. The very last paragraph, you inserted the word morals. I'm not sure what the purpose was of inserting the word morals into that paragraph.
Sorry, this was comparable to some other ordinances that we saw in reference to the public health, safety, morals, or general welfare.
The concept of health, safety, morals, and general welfare is kind of legal boilerplate that goes back to the Middle Ages, probably. It's quite commonly used in statutes, ordinances, and stuff going back a long way.
I guess I'm going to have to move?
You know, you're going to be grandfathered in.
You lawyers don't have morals, so we're good anyway, so don't worry about it.
All righty, all set.
I guess. Just because it's been around a long time, I'm not sure of the purpose of it.
It's kind of, it is sort of a boilerplate thing, so, anyway. We'll take, put that under consideration. All right. I don't know if anybody wants to emerge as a spokesman. I know Mr. Arella has, you and I have not talked yet tonight, but I know you were featured prominently at the last meeting, and I'd like to give you more than three minutes, okay? We don't want to be silly about it, but as long as we can try to keep it to a couple spokespeople from the neighborhoods, that would be great. But I'm not stopping anybody. If you still want to come up and talk for three minutes, that's fine. We'll just try to wing it and accommodate each other. So I don't know if you want to speak, Mr. Arella, but I kind of caught your eye there, and you're welcome to have the floor. And then what we will need for our record keeper here is we do need your name and address clearly into the record so that we have a proper record and spell it.
Thank you for presenting the proposal today and your explanation for...
Could you hold the microphone a little bit closer?
Yes. Again, thank you again for allowing me this time to speak, and thank you for the presentation and the extra study session to allow an explanation to come forth. I want to express to you that I'm not speaking solely on my behalf, but a number of residents, a number of constituents, a number of organizations, when I presented the questions that the application posed and the ordinance amendment posed, there are significant questions that unfortunately are still left unanswered. I believe the purpose of the ordinance is clearly stated under the purpose heading. It gives you exactly what the purpose of this ordinance is supposed to do. And I think after contemplation, deliberation, conversation, argument with other residents, we've come to the conclusion that the amendments to the ordinance kind of eviscerate what the purpose of this ordinance is for. In its entirety, and in summary, I would like to say that we believe the purpose of the ordinance is to protect a piece of land that has a significant feature, whether it be a natural feature or historic feature, some feature, that if we developed it according to the zoning restrictions that are currently in place, we could possibly eliminate the feature that makes that property unique. And so we have this tweak to our zoning laws that say, you know what, we're going to take this into consideration and allow some subtle changes to that law to accommodate this feature that makes this part of the community unique. And what we've done by these changes and amendments, I believe we've done a number of things. First of all, we have not, to my knowledge, increased the security or the safety that the provisions currently enumerated provide us, right? So we've got provisions that have been removed, and we were glanced over here, 2.4, I believe it's 22.4 to 22.8, we talk about this flow chart that says the process stays the same. Well, it eviscerates the 300-foot notice. It's eliminated. It is one of the most significant parts of this ordinance because it provides the protection to adjacent landowners that say, hey, you know, we're going to tell you that we've got something going on with this property, and it takes it right out. The other thing it does is it adds a caveat, and I think it was pointed out by one of the board members. Not only can you, not only can the amendment be used to preserve a piece of property that has this unique feature, but if it doesn't have any feature, and it's just like any other piece of property, will create some uniqueness about it, thereby making it applicable to any piece of land. So now it becomes more incumbent upon the residents of the entire community to say, we've just changed this ordinance to say, any monopoly game that's played where we're buying up two or three large parcels of property that equal this 40 acres, we can now shave it all off, put something in there called an amenity, and then it can take the place of a natural or one of the unique aesthetic qualities of that property. So it substantively changes the ordinance. It actually conflicts with the purpose of the ordinance by making those changes. So I don't know how you reconcile the amendments as they're stated. And what I've done, in the very limited time that I've had, is I've prepared a questionnaire, and it's by the changes that I saw in the application that was submitted, just to let the board members look over the questions to say, how does this protect the community? How do these changes add more protection, as Mr. Bennett says, than we would have without the changes? And how does it protect the discretionary powers given to the planning commission? We elect these people into that body because of their knowledge of the community, because of their experience, because of the information they have regarding specific parts of the community, so that if there is discretion to be used, we've empowered these guys to use that discretion. Some of these amendments eviscerate that discretion, take the power away from the planning commission, boost it up to the board, which now has additional powers. The other piece of this is that there's accountability provisions that are taken away. The recording of decisions is stricken from the ordinance. You no longer have to record why a certain change was accepted. So I'm just saying, if you could take a look deeply into this, and I know there's a lot of time being exhausted on some of these amendments, but I believe we pay resources to do this, and there may be explanations, and I would say if there are explanations for the questions that I've summarized, and again, these are not questions by a disgruntled homeowner who's adjacent to this property that's accepting what's going on. These are widespread changes that will affect and impact the rest of the community in ways we don't yet understand. So I think the zoning enabling act has enough provisions in it as it exists, and there's some valid and good tweaks in here, to address certain changes that a prospective property owner or prospective purchaser to that property might want if they were to purchase it, that we don't have to eviscerate the protections that were provided in this ordinance specifically to that end. And so I just ask if you could just review, I only had time to print up three of these questions, or three copies before I left, scrambled out of the office today to get here, but that's pretty much basically what they had to say. Thank you.
Any comments or questions by the board or no? Kevin, do you want to comment on anything?
The only thing I would say is that section 22.4 does not eviscerate the notice requirements for a cluster housing option. And I think what...
Okay. All right. Yeah, and we don't want to, I mean, I'm not, I don't want to be, you know, argumentative, so.
Just for purposes of clarification, I was the one who's asked that those requirements stay in, it's 22.4. What was changed in there before was that the notice requirements have to comply with the zoning enabling act, and the zoning ordinance requirements are identical with the zoning enabling act.
Okay. He did?
The green button should be green. When you push it, the light has to be green.
Give it a second. Don't give it to me, none of Minecraft works.
You just push it just one time.
You've got to give it a few seconds.
So, one last question, and it has to do with the process that was followed and the confusion it created, because what we saw, we stumbled upon, the notice, we have no issue with the notice requirement for the text amendment. That was there, we get that, it was there. It was how it was presented for a specific, conditioned for a specific piece of property, which would then, you ask, you scratch your head, why is a general text amendment buried in an application for a specific piece of property and not noticed? That's, and it's confusing. So if it was two separate issues, if there was the notice and then the application, not the application with the amendment buried in the application, it might have been easier to unravel. But they were embedded together and it created confusion.
Okay. All right, anybody else? You have to turn it on again.
Pull it out, please. Push the button.
Wait a few seconds, Joe.
Okay.
We need your name and address too, Joe.
Joe Van Esley, 125599, Holland Park Drive. I'd like to address 22.11, the discretionary tool that our planner talked about. You talk about an exemplary project, okay? I think it's kind of like modern art. What somebody thinks what I think is and what they think are two different things, you start giving out density in large quantities. I just want to know, and this is a question to the planners, how many communities does McKenna represent that give the community absolute discretion on density for a cluster ordinance? I would think that this would be, I would call it, actual discretionary rezoning. If you're going to rezone a property, rezone a property. Don't leave it up to somebody's discretion because somebody stuck it in the ordinance in an amendment. And that's all I have to say.
Okay.
Since we're on that subject, Laura, what is the definition of contract zoning, which is not legal? What is the definition? It used to be done years ago. Contract zoning.
Contract zoning is a concept whereby a municipality and a developer enter into a bilateral contract to allow the developer to develop a certain parcel of property in a certain way. The Michigan Supreme Court, the Michigan courts have not specifically ruled on whether or not contract zoning is legal or illegal, except in a footnote in one decision. Generally, contract zoning creates the appearance of impropriety. The zoning enabling act does allow for conditional zoning, which is different than contract zoning. Conditional zoning is where there is no bilateral nature to the contract. That's where the developer or the property owner submits an application to the township board. There is no amendment, no discussion, no negotiations. The board can either accept that or not accept that. That is allowed under certain circumstances under the zoning enabling act, but it's distinct from contract zoning.
Is it working now? Sean Lake, 12599, Belton Court. This is the township map. The township's around a long time, this map's pretty full, so why at this, my question is why at this hour are we trying to remake the rulebook? There's not much land left, so that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Now, we need other people to speak. What was the question again?
What was the question?
My question was, how many other communities or communities that McKenna represents that allow discretionary cluster ordinance, wanting to allow, how many other communities has that in them?
I don't know if you know that question or not.
I don't know that question off the top of my head. There's a wealth of communities that McKenna works in across the state. I do know, just off the top of my head, that Hamburg Township has a similar provision that they've used successfully in a number of cluster housing developments. They're called open space PUDs in their community, but, I'm sorry, Hamburg Township, they're called open space PUDs, but they have discretionary provisions for additional density bonuses, for one example.
Okay, thank you. Hello, sir.
Good evening. My name's John Cullen, and I live at 49003 Fox Drive South, and I have a few questions, and they're pretty simple questions, but at least as I'm sitting here, I was a little confused by some things, so I wanted to maybe confirm things. My first question was, is this a text amendment? Because that's sort of how it's titled, and I was trying to find out whether it truly is a text amendment, or is this a rezoning or map amendment, as you were discussing the notice requirements for.
It's a text amendment.
Okay, and that's what I thought. But then I also thought, and I'll double, I'll confirm this, I thought the planner indicated that previously, when you had cluster housing, the density had to conform to the zoning rules that were applicable to that area, correct?
As provided in the cluster housing ordinance.
Right. So if it was 1RE before, the cluster housing still had to conform to 1RE. R1E, I'm sorry, R1E.
Is that correct?
Okay. So in this amendment, though, I'm seeing that the density initially, and I think it's in section 22.11, has an initial ability to increase the density or the zoning for an area by at least 25%. And I guess my question is, when you're talking about increasing, and I'll read the wording exactly, the overall gross density of up to 25%, does that mean that if you were allowed 10 houses on a parcel, you now can have 12 and a half? Or does it mean something different? What does this 25% overall increase in the density mean?
The bonus.
The bonus. The bonus, yeah.
In that example, it would be a discretionary consideration of the planning commission and the board of trustees to allow an additional two units.
Okay. So then my final question is, close to my final question, is when I look farther into 22.11, I see this exemplary projects, and suddenly we're removing any limit on the density, which again, looks to me like you're really doing rezoning, because as I read it, you're now allowed to go above the 25% increase, and there's no upper limit on this that I saw at all. And that seems to me that you're really going from saying, we can have R1E of .86 to R1E of 4.0, because there's no limit put in it. And it says that it may be discretionary, but why would we ever do something to eliminate any kind of density requirement and completely eviscerate the zoning maps?
Well, the, any application that was received and evaluated would be evaluated on the merits of this density chart that has remained intact in the cluster housing option, so the corresponding dwelling units to the underlying zoning district would prevail, and the future land use map would be taken into consideration, the adjacent properties, I'm sorry, the adjacent properties would be taken into consideration, surrounding densities, the provision of open space, the quality of open space. There's a number of factors that will go into the evaluation to find an appropriate fit.
Okay, well, I guess my question wasn't clear then, because what I'm trying to figure out is, under the exemplary projects, is there an upper limit on what the density increase could be? Because I didn't see it in the language.
I don't think so.
You're interpreting it the same way I'm interpreting it.
Okay. And that's why, and that's why I'm asking, I mean, why would we basically say we're not going to have any upper limit? not gonna have any upper limit? That's my question. Is there an upper limit that I don't understand somehow? Or why would we wanna not have an upper limit?
There's a school of thought by the American Planning Association on density to allow for greater flexibility and discretionary provisions. It's very common in other states, but it's not a standalone. So all the other provisions of the ordinance would still apply, the future land use map and the master plan. And the Planning Commission and the Board of Trustees, who have been applying cluster housing and residential unit developments for over 50 years, I believe in the township, would continue that same process. And that procedural process with the public hearing and public meetings.
So this, but this ordinance, though, since we've opened it up for revisions, and you know, most of these amendments are, you could argue, are actually placing more restrictions on cluster housing options within the township. I mean, I'm not, I'm not asking you to agree, I'm just, that's my observation. It looks like they have to jump through a lot more hoops, I think, as you pointed out. But would it be prudent for us, without, I don't know, violating state law or anything like that, to have some kind of guardrails, whether that's, you call that a cap or a limit, but based on some kind of a formula? I don't know what that formula would look like. I know we got a very good suggestion from one of our zoning board members, which I thought was very helpful, because he's been in the field and he's, you know, had to rule on similar situations in the past. But that might be something... Hold on, she's being interrupted.
I think that...
That might be something that we might wanna consider, or that the Planning Commission might wanna consider, as this ordinance, this draft ordinance is modified in the future.
I think that, if I may make a comment, that in 22.11 is really, I think, where the hangup is and the public objection. And a little bit on the history of this, going back to the December board meeting, sorry, Planning Commission meeting, that part of...
Because you are our liaison to the board.
I am the liaison to the Planning Commission. So I sit on the Planning Commission as a, there's one elected that has to be on the Planning Commission. And a lot of what was done in this ordinance was, you know, as Laura had indicated, cleanup, creates further restrictions, stuff like that. But 22.11 is where the hangup is for a lot of people, including me. And I actually was one of the two that voted no on it in December for that reason, because of this bonus and, you know, the ambiguity around, I mean, you could have 100 units in there, and the ambiguity around that. And I think that's where we're, to me, it's a do not pass go moment because of this section, not necessarily because of other parts of it.
Trustees, if there's direction to, you know, reevaluate the ordinance in certain sections and to review it again with the Planning Commission and hold any other future meeting, public meetings, you know, we are more than happy to. This ordinance should reflect the vision of the community, and I think we've received a lot of helpful feedback through this process.
So what, you had, sorry, you had heard, I'm not sure that I heard you right, earlier you said an application was withdrawn. Which application?
Well, there was an application submitted by, Northridge Church is the property owner, and Brian Amon is the...
So the application has been withdrawn?
Yes, as of tonight.
Okay.
Yeah. But I don't want that fact to stop this process, because this is a legislative process, and you know, this is how a bill becomes a law, you know? And what we need to do is, there's a lot of good stuff in these amendments, and I think we have to fine tune it. We clearly needed more time to discuss this than last night would have allowed, or last night, or the last meeting would have allowed. So, you know, Laura's taking notes, Kevin's taking notes. We cannot vote on anything tonight, but, you know, clearly, it's not gonna go anywhere in its current form, and, you know, I think, I don't know what we do, Kevin, I guess I'm looking to you administratively, I mean, what do we, do I, can I, as supervisor, just merely direct that the, that the planning director take it back to the Planning Commission, or what?
Which should happen, because the Planning Commission has already voted on the existing ordinance. If the board wants to make amendments to the existing proposed ordinance, is refer it back to the Planning Commission for another public hearing.
Okay. But that would have to happen at a board meeting, correct?
Yeah.
Because there has to be a formal vote on that.
Yes, and you can't vote on anything tonight.
Right.
Kinda like remanding it back.
This gentleman still has some more.
Hold on, I mean, I'm just, we're having a conversation here. So my concern then, because what I remember back to is a couple of years ago, we had, or last year, '17, we had that PUD issue, right? And in that case, we took a formal vote and we sent it back to the Planning Commission for further review. Okay, so that would be comparable. Okay.
I just wanted to thank the board for listening. I think that the one issue that really strikes me, and obviously strikes some of the board members, is the fact that there's this no cap, no limit, no, and I think that's not consistent with what zoning laws are supposed to be. There's a reason why I live in a neighborhood that's zoned R1H or R1E, and I think people have an expectation that that's going to be respected. There might be a little wiggle room, but there has to be a limit on what that little bit of wiggle room is. And 25% would seem to be a fair amount of wiggle room. Thank you.
Alrighty, anybody else? Mr. Boyd, Tim Boyd, do you wanna comment? I gave you some kudos here tonight, you might as well come and accept the accolades.
Quit while you're ahead.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
No, probably not.
It's on now. Good evening. My name is Lee Hachigian. I'm on 12392 Howland Park Drive. Sure will, it's H-A-C-H-I-G-I-A-N. I was looking at section 22.11 under permitted densities, and down at the very bottom, it talks about density impacts. And it starts off by saying, "The density shall not place an unreasonable impact to the surrounding land or property owners." Kind of right in the middle of that. But then on the, you go by a couple more sentences down, it says, "An unreasonable impact shall be considered an unacceptable, significant adverse effect on quality." And I just have difficulty understanding what kind of a threshold would ever reach that level. Thank you.
Traffic.
That would be evaluated if there was a traffic study or an environmental impact, a market study perhaps, a number of things.
Okay. Good. All right, anybody else?
The address is, perfect. There you go. Clinton Michael, my address is 12305 Howland Park Drive. So I think there's been significant progress with the board and its thinking at this meeting today, sorry. And thanks to Laura for that really informative presentation on cluster housing. I mean, that's excellent. Here's the thing, we have cluster housing in Plymouth Township. That's not what this is about. This is about 22.11 and granting a density bonus and getting a hook to make that density bonus unlimited. Where did this proposed ordinance change come from? Did we citizens propose this?
The Planning Commission.
Okay. Were they driving down Forward Road, Sheldon Road, Beck Road, thinking, gosh, there's so little traffic here? I really think we need to boost up air density? Were they looking at their power grid and saying, oh my, we really need some more users on this understrained power grid? No. Where did this come from? This came from a politically connected developer. This came from someone who stands to make more money off of denser housing. And frankly, you know, this is not driven by the township of Plymouth's needs. This is a developer who has a history of voraciously suing other townships and municipalities that oppose their desires. And frankly, that's what this change does. Whether you put a cap on the density limit, if you grant that bonus, cap or no cap, this is a lawsuit factory. And frankly, that's where they thrive. One place I really think that the Board of Trustees and the Planning Commission should look at would be Grand Saquaw versus the township of Northfield. Really interesting case, I'm not gonna go into it, but even there, you can see the problems that arise. And frankly, I mean, it's interesting looking at the testimony of the expert witnesses, really statewide respected planning consultants hired by Grand Saquaw as their expert witnesses. So really interesting stuff that happens.
Do you have a question?
No, no questions. Just comments, Kurt, thank you.
All right.
So, to the point that was raised, these density bonuses really don't happen often at all in townships or cities, be they more dense cities or otherwise. Why? There's a reason. They change the zoning. They give way too much discretion to the developers. They provide hooks for the developers to come in and file lawsuits. And then we get to play the game of the subjective characteristics, which frankly, without a density bonus, that developer does not have an incentive to sue because they don't have that hook. The subjective criteria, when that density bonus is added, gives the developer that hook to sue and essentially tax the people of the township and throw their weight around as bargaining power for changing the zoning. Plymouth Township's done great without a density bonus. And as was pointed out, you know, there's not that much land left. We don't need the monopoly game, we don't need the density bonus, we don't need the base desires driving this, which are not the township of Plymouth citizens. None of us need our property values lowered by more dense housing. None of us want to change the open and airy characteristic of the town we live in. Where's this coming from? That's it.
Mr. Rotell, have you brought more board games for us tonight?
How about RISK, man? I love RISK.
RISK.
No, of course not. Do you give that back to the kids, I hope, too?
Killing me, all right. No monopoly game demonstration tonight. I wanna thank Mr. Heisey and the Board of Trustees for doing the right thing, being thoughtful and studying this issue. And I wanna say, he and Ms. Haw were very professional and very courteous and very responsive to me and Plymouth Commons' concerns, and we really appreciate it. I was a little nervous getting involved in this, for what I hear on social media and the crew that was in here prior. It's been wonderful. I think Mr. Heisey is right, there's some great things in these amendments. Some that do make them better, some that do make them more restrictive, the bricks, varying the design, language about rear, side detached, all fantastic. Ms. Haw did educate me on the need for active adult developments, and I agree with her, you know, unfortunately, like everyone says, we don't have much land left. You know, my concerns have been echoed here tonight. No other township that I can find gives any density bonus, only, in those townships, only two cities give a capped 20 and 25% bonuses for certain requirements, the City of Troy, City of Wixom. I'll look into Hamburg, I'm not sure where that is. Obviously, totally removing the cap on density if we can't agree with how exceptional the project is. And it is interesting, I wasn't gonna make this comment, but I will, I'd like to see the zoning map updated. I started to research back all the five active cluster housing projects, and I think they all got rezoned. And I think the colors are gonna be, started to get polka dotted, I'm not sure, it was very, had to cobble it all together. Verona Park looks gorgeous, right across the golf course on Beck, looks absolutely spectacular. There's 14 units going in there, it was zoned for seven. It looks great on paper, I don't know in real life how it's gonna turn out. So you're right, I will come back to my favorite board game as a child, okay? This is what...
That is RISK. Nice call.
I believe in all of you, I really do. McKenna, I trust all of you. I don't know who's gonna come knocking on the door, I feel like the way this was handled, you know, I don't know, it wasn't, it was interesting. Just don't leave this up to someone else, to the townships, you know, I've lived here since '77, I don't wanna see RISK. In closing, I wrote this and you already did it, I know you do the right thing tonight, you already did it. And I sincerely, sincerely, look forward to the opportunity to sit down with Northridge Church and create a win-win for the neighbors, the township and them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right. We're gonna move on to supervisor and trustee comments, item D, anybody? Let's start with Bob.
None here.
Gary?
Oh, yeah, I have. Thank you all for coming. As election season comes up next year, things may or may not change, but I implore you all to keep an eye on all of us, because contrary to what was once said tonight, the Planning Commission is not elected, it is selected by the Board of Trustees. If you get a Board of Trustees that have different motivations, something could change. So we, you know, I certainly beg you all, keep an eye on us. We all ran for election for transparency, and that's certainly what I know tonight is. I learned a great deal, and thank you, Laura, for putting a great presentation together. So thank you again, and keep it going.
Thank you, Jerry.
I just wanted to note that the Plymouth Community Band is having a fundraiser at the First United Methodist Church this Friday from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., $12 in Italian cuisine, so please stop by.
I have nothing, Mark.
I just wanna echo what Gary said, we appreciate everybody coming out and voicing your opinions. I think when I listen to people, I learned something from every single person that came up there. And I agree with the majority of the comments. I think we're in a situation in Plymouth Township right now where we've got very little land to be developed. And so I think we have to be very careful about how we develop that land and be thoughtful in the way we do it. That's why I think this ordinance is so important, and we're gonna continue to work on it. My concerns, and I think I've already voiced them with the way it's written right now, is that it leaves a little too much to the discretion. From the footage off of the street, to the spacing between the houses, to the density, it leaves a little too much subjective, and I'd rather firm that up to make sure that a rule is a rule is a rule. I'm not supportive of the way it's written today, I'd like to see some of those modifications and send it back to the Planning Commission like we talked about. But again, thanks for everybody's, for coming out and for voicing your opinions and doing it in a very respectful and educated manner.
I think this is a ruse for a developer's nirvana sprinkled with social engineering. I want it to go away. This is going to open us up to lawsuits. It could, developers could buy up land and completely change the character of the community. There's no urgency about this, Plymouth is developing... Plymouth has developed very well for 50 years without something like this. So I'm opposed to it.
Okay. Thank you. Need a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Heitman.
We adjourn.
Move to adjourn by Mr. Heitman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Forville. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.